Public data, I have so much more data than that.
Do you?
And then, like, fragmenting removes them.
It is.
But she's basically just a ton.
Like, giving like the yearly, you know?
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah. Just, uh, it's crazy. You go to the month, you go to any year, day.
Huh?
He said we're gonna start.
Oh, we are?
We have not.
What?
Yeah.
Does that mean we're filming?
That's a shame.
Yeah.
So, does that mean we start or is that?
Communication's getting shaky now.
He's our friend.
No, I know. It's like my mo-.
I read, hold on, because I think we made-
It's like communicating with my mother now.
So, do we think we're live?
It really is.
I just texted, said okay to start.
All right. The, it may, it might be live. So, everyone knows.
All righty then.
Really? Yeah.
Can you cut, can you cut out the first ten minutes?
There we go.
Hi Fred. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start.
Okay.
We're recording and live will come on in some way.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's not recording?
It's recording, it's just, may not be live in the beginning.
Recording now, so.
Okay.
We'll be able to play it back at a minimum.
Yeah.
We'll start it now and not ten minutes ago.
We'll start it, yeah, not ten minutes ago, we'll, we'll start it now. All right, can everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, tonight is Tuesday, June tenth. Uh, we're starting a bit late, I apologize for that, we are experiencing technical difficulties and may still be, uh, for those who are trying to watch at home. Um, this, and I guess I'm saying this more to the audience than I'm saying this to anyone currently watching at home because you can't, but this will, this is being recorded and so anyone who wasn't able to catch this while it's live on TV right now will be able to either see it, it would, it'll be available on the website, uh, through our boards and commissions, uh, page where you'd be able to stream it to, to see anything that's discussed in this meeting. So, um, it's, it goes beyond even just having it set into public record, you'll be able to actually watch the meeting. Uh, we just came from executive session where we discussed boards, commissions, and committee vacancies. The first order of business on our agenda is a resolution considering adopting a seeker amendment finding statement for the proposed action submitted by Sunrise Development, Inc. for property at nine hundred King Street.
It's a rather long resolution, so I'm gonna try to abbreviate where I can. Uh, but whereas nine hundred King Street is the owner of the property and is shown, um, located in a planned unit development in a scenic ra- uh, road overlay district, and whereas the property is currently improved with a two hundred and fifteen thousand square foot office building and a parking lot for about five hundred and ninety-five spaces, and whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the board approved a PUD site plan for the development of an age restricted, which is sixty-two years of age and older, senior living facility with a total of two hundred and thirty-one residential units consisting of a hundred and twenty-six independent living, eighty-five assisted living, and twenty townhomes for a total square footage of three hundred and forty-five thousand nine oh-two, and other related infrastructure, driveways, walkways, garage, and surface parking, site lighting, star, uh, signage, and stormwater, all herein after called the project. And whereas prior to the approving the site plan, in two thousand twenty-one, the board adopted a finding statement as lead agency pursuant to seeker and adopted a local law amending the village code to add a section and approved a pay your PUD concept plan for the project. And whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the planning board approved a wetlands permit and steep slopes permit pursuant to the village code, and whereas the PUD site plan approval, wetlands and steep slopes permit approvals have been extended from time to time such that the PUD site plan is currently scheduled to expire in September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the wetlands and steep slopes permits are scheduled to expire on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and whereas on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, an application was submitted to the village by Sunrise Development, now with the, now known as the applicant, as contract vendor for the property, seeking amendments to the PUD site plan, which include a reduction to the building footprint, updated portco share entry for the independent and assisted living buildings, updated courtyard layout in addition to balconies and walkout terraces, additional outdoor amenity, modification of the rear loading zone, addition of a structure of the proposed generator, an outdoor trash area, addition of a second garage space in each of the twenty townhomes, and modification of the building footprint of the ten townhomes to allow for the addition of a second main level bedroom, and whereas the, the planning board is the approval authority for the amended site plan pursuant to village code, and whereas the board desires to continue its role as lead agency for the amended project, which is classified, classified as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker, and whereas on March two thousand twenty-five, the board authorized a circulation of a notice of intent to act as lead agent to continue its role as lead agency for the review of the amended project and classified it again as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker. And then, and whereas on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, the village board's notice of intent to declare itself lead agency was circulated and no objections were received, and whereas the amended project was referred to the county planning board in accordance with genuine municipal law and the county co- and the county code.
... downstairs.
It is.
She's basically just a ton.
Like the yearly, no? Yeah. Yeah.
Just, uh, crazy. You go to the month, you go to any year, day. Huh? Oh, we are?
What?
Does that mean we're filming?
That's a shame.
So, does that mean we start?
Communications getting shaky now.
He's our friend.
No, I know. It's like my mo-
I read, hold on, because I think we made-
It's like communicating with my mother now.
So, do we think we're live?
I just texted, said okay to start.
All right. The, it may, it might just maybe live. So everyone knows.
All righty then.
Really? Yeah, uh...
Can you cut, can you cut out the first ten minutes? There we go. All right.
Hi Fred. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna start.
Okay.
We're recording and live will come on in some way.
Okay.
Oh, so it's not recording?
It's recording, it's just, may not be live in the beginning.
Recording now, so.
Okay.
We'll be able to play it back at a minimum.
Yeah.
We'll start it now and not ten minutes ago.
We'll start it, yeah, not ten minutes ago, we'll, we'll start it now. All right, can everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, tonight is Tuesday, June tenth. Uh, we're starting a bit late, I apologize for that. We are experiencing technical difficulties and may still be, uh, for those who are trying to watch at home. Um, this, and I guess I'm saying this more to the audience than I'm saying this to anyone currently watching at home because you can't, but this will, this is being recorded. And so, anyone who wasn't able to catch this while it's live on TV right now will be able to either see it. It would, it'll be available on the website, uh, through our boards and commissions, uh, page, where you'd be able to stream it to, to see anything that's discussed in this meeting. So, um, it's, it goes beyond even just having it set into public record. You'll be able to actually watch the meeting. Uh, we just came from executive session where we discussed boards, commissions, and committee vacancies. The first order of business on our agenda is a resolution considering adopting a seeker amendment finding statement for the proposed actions submitted by Sunrise Development, Inc. for property at nine hundred King Street.
It's a rather long resolution, so I'm gonna try to abbreviate where I can. Uh, but whereas nine hundred King Street is the owner of the property and is shown, um, located in a planned unit development in a scenic ra- uh, road overlay district. And whereas the property is currently improved with a two hundred and fifteen thousand square foot office building and a parking lot for about five hundred and ninety-five spaces. And whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the board approved a PUD site plan for the development of an age restricted, which is sixty-two years of age and older senior living facility with a total of two hundred and thirty-one residential units, consisting of a hundred and twenty-six independent living, eighty-five assisted living, and twenty townhomes for a total square footage of three hundred forty-five thousand nine oh two and other related infrastructure, driveways, walkways, garage, and surface parking, site lighting, star, uh, signage, and stormwater, all herein after called the project. And whereas prior to the approving the site plan, in two thousand twenty-one, the board adopted a finding statement as lead agency pursuant to seeker and adopted a local law amending the village code to add a section and approved a pay your, PUD concept plan for the project. And whereas in two thousand twenty-one, the planning board approved a wetlands permit and steep slopes permit pursuant to the village code. And whereas the PUD site plan approval, wetlands and steep slopes permit approvals have been extended from time to time, such that the PUD site plan is currently scheduled to expire in September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the wetlands and steep slopes permits are scheduled to expire on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, an application was submitted to the village by Sunrise Development, now with the, now known as the applicant, as contract vendee for the property, seeking amendments to the PUD site plan, which include a reduction to the building footprint, updated portco share entry for the independent and assisted living buildings, updated courtyard layout in addition to balconies and walkout terraces, additional outdoor amenity, modification of the rear loading zone, addition of a structure of the proposed generator, an outdoor trash area, addition of a second garage space in each of the twenty townhomes, and modification of the building footprint of the ten townhomes to allow for the addition of a second main level bedroom. And whereas the, the planning board is the approval authority for the amended site plan pursuant to village code. And whereas the board desires to continue its role as lead agency for the amended project, which is classified, classified as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker. And whereas on March two thousand twenty-five, the board authorized a circulation of a notice of intent to act as lead agent to continue its role as lead agency for the review of the amended project and classified it again as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker. And then, and whereas on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, the village board's notice of intent to declare itself lead agency was circulated and no objections were received. And whereas the amended project was referred to the county planning board in accordance with genuine municipal law and the county co- and the county code. And whereas the village received comments from the county planning board dated April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, whereas the village board is in receipt of all materials submitted in furtherance of the amended project, including the environmental assessment form. And whereas the board reviewed and conducted the relevant environmental impacts, or considered the relevant environmental impacts resulting from the changes proposed in the amended project and compared it to the previously studied in prior DEIS and FEIS. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to New York State, uh, seeker, the village board of trustees determines the amended project does not result in any new significant adverse environmental impacts that were not studied or inadequately studied in the prior environmental impact statement, and therefore no supplemental environmental impact statement is warranted. And being further resolved that pursuant to seeker, the village board hereby adopts the annexed amended finding statements, setting forth its conditions related to the amended project, which is analyzed in the amended finding statement as the amended further revised alternative and based upon the written facts and conclusions that they're, set forth therein. The board hereby finds and certifies that, one, it has considered the relevant environmental impact, impacts, facts, and conclusions discussed, disclosed in the DEIS and FEIS and the amended PUD. And whereas it has weighed and balanced the relevant environmental impacts with social, economical, economic, and other considerations. Three, the requirements to seeker and seeker regulations have been met. Four, consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations from among the reasonable alternatives available. The amended further reduced alternative voi- avoids, minimizes, enver- avoids or minimizes environmental impacts to the maximum extent possible or practicable. And that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable and incorporated as conditions in the decision, uh, tho- to the decision those mitigative measures that were identified in the amended finding statement. And five, adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions of any amended PUD site plan approval within the project site those relevant mitigation measures identified in the prior DIS, FEIS, and this amended findings of, uh, statement of findings. And being further resolved that the village staff or consultants and/or consultants and counsel are directed to file, circulate, and publish the amended, amended filings, finding statement in accordance with, uh, New York State law.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Second.
So, um, I wa- I wanna say a few things first and then we're gonna, and I'm gonna pass it over.
Okay.
Um, you know, one thing I, I would just say is that, um, for those, you know, listening at home or watching this recorded, um, all of these documents as they have been along are available on the, on the village's website. That, um, and that includes letters we've received in relation to this application. So this'll, this is just a continuation of that. We will continue to have all of this publicly available. Um, and I think this was a long resolution, so, um, why don't we get a little background on exactly what we're discussing here, uh, so the public's aware of it?
Sure, I'll give the very big, high-level one and then I'll let, uh, uh, Keenan Bean and, and our planning consultant, uh, give any other further updates. So, the village board is the lead agency for seeker determinations. So what's before the board is the, uh, is, is considering the under seeker, the environmental review, the amend, an amending finding sta- amended finding statement to see, are the proposed changes in the, uh, development, is what's proposed, does that have any adverse environmental impacts that need to be further reviewed? And that's what's before the village board. What's not before the village board is the amended site plan. The amended site plan itself is under the planning board. They're the final approval authority for amended site plan. Also, what's not before the, before the board tonight is the architect, uh, issues that are reviewed by the architecture review board. So there's still two other boards that are actively look at the application. Specifically, what's before, to, before the board tonight is the seeker provisions and whether or not any environmental studies, further studies are needed and any amend, whether the amendment, the amended application, uh, needs any further review and whether there needs to be an amended finding statement. And that's what's being considered. There's a draft amended finding statement which has been prepared.
So, uh, first I wanna note with, with respect to the amended finding statement, uh, there was an inadvertent typographical error on page thirty-three of that document. It's under the heading socio-economic and fiscal impacts. It refers to a pilot agreement period of seven years, um, and an initial seven-year voluntary payment period. Though, those references should be changed to eight years. So, I just wanted to note that, uh, we'll make that correction and, um, and that that was an inadvertent typographical error on, on page thirty-three of the amended finding statement. Um, and then just in terms of, uh, the scope of review, the amended application is not a basis to have a second bite at the apple for all parts of what was previously reviewed. You're not revisiting, uh, i- issues that have already been decided. Review is limited to the scope of the amendments, most of which in this instance reduce the various impacts of the project.
Thank you, Ralph. Um, and, and, uh, you know, we, I would say that we did receive a few letters in regards to this, um, some today. I do wanna address some of the items that were brought up, uh, in those letters we received. But, but as, as Ralph said, you know, what we're really looking at here is how, is how this has changed. Um, certainly those of us who have been on the board a while, um, we remember going through a very long EIS process. Um, and this has seen multiple iterations. This is, it was reduced in scope during the process and we've seen it reduced even more, uh, now with this. Um, so we received, uh, two letters today. Uh, one was from, uh, Snyder and Snyder, uh, representing the Arbers. And it, and it brought up a, a few points that I just wanna, um, talk to because we do have some of our experts here. Um, and again, you know, one, two of the items brought up were the traffic and circulation and the sewer maintenance. Um, so perhaps we can, uh, we have, we're joined by Sarah Brown here. Maybe you could.
Um, I can speak to the traffic issue that was brought up. Um, our office, when we received the amended site plan, uh, the first thing that we did was compare it to the previously approved plan to see if there are any changes, uh, that would warrant further environmental review. And as part of that, uh, we did take a look at the traffic study. The original traffic impact study prepared for the DEIS was based on a certain unit count, um, the number of aisle, uh, independent living units, assisted living units, and townhomes. So, uh, the original, the original traffic impact study actually was based on the number that were originally proposed, which was much higher than what is now. Um, what was previously approved and what is proposed now. There has been no change in the number of bedrooms, the number of beds in the assisted living, or the number of townhomes. So we did not require further traffic impact study. I think where some of the confusion may have come up is that as part of your duties as lead agency, you had to recirculate to all the involved and interested agencies. And New York State DOT sent back a standard letter that said, for a, a project of this size, typically there would be a traffic study. However, the traffic study was done as part of the DEIS. And none of the factors that had been changed in this application would rise to the level of redoing the traffic impact study.
Thank you, and I know, uh, Ralph, did you wanna ask?
I could just add with respect to sewer, you had mentioned sewer.
Yes.
If you'd want me to address that now. Um, from our opinion and our review of the, the documents, there's no basis in the record for requiring the applicant to clean the existing ten-inch main in Arbor Drive. It was not a condition of the original approval, and there is nothing about the amended application that is changing the assessment of the sanitary sewer facilities, which was previously vetted and reviewed as part of the original project.
All right, thank you. And, and I would also say with aspects, um, to the visual impacts, the construction impacts, that again, this process isn't done. That, uh, there, this, the amended site plan is, is before the planning board, and there, this project still is going before the ARB, the architectural review board. So this is still going to be looked at, um, and, you know, and potentially there may be, um, some, some aesthetics changed with this, uh, when it's in front of ARB, but that's, the ARB is purview, not, not this board. And certainly not at this point when we're looking at, uh, the seeker finding statement. Yes, Chris?
And I would just add, um, to add what Mr. DeMarco said, I just wanna talk about the sewers. There is a requirement in the original site plan that the origi- the line there has to be replaced or relined. Michael, do you remember which was? Has to be relined from everywhere on the property line, so, from the property line in. So there, the, the pipe that's on the property for this particular application ha- does have to be redone or relined prior to, as part of the improvement. And even if that, but regardless, that type of a condition wouldn't be the finding, if, under the finding statement, it would be part of a site plan review which was already completed. Uh, if they were modifying the sewers, that would still be done before the planning board, which they're not doing in this application.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And, um, and I should point out that the, uh, that the upcoming planning board meeting, for anyone who's interested, is this Thursday, it's coming s- Thursday?
Looking it up right now.
Yeah, Thursday.
At six-thirty. And then the, um, upcoming, I have it here, Susan, the upcoming ARB meeting, uh, is Thursday, June twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Building a special meeting for that purpose, I believe.
Right.
For this application.
Um, we also received a letter from, uh, Rosemary Schlang today, who's in, I see is in attendance here. Um, and again, talking about various issues that I don't think really are within the scope of the seeker finding statement. I'm not sure, but Ralph, if you or Sarah wants to...
That, that's the way we see it as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, um, I would open this up to any questions or comments from the board.
No com- no questions. And we're comfortable with, uh, is in fairness.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think that's probably where most of, uh, our, this board's questions or comments lies. You know, I'm very, certainly very interested to see it through the planning board process and the ARB process. Um, obviously, you know, um, we've been at this a long time. Um, anyone who's been following it knows it's been, uh, many, many years that we've worked through, um, uh, an EIS, um, through the, the DEIS, through the FEIS, um, and the times since. Um, from a personal standpoint, I'm very happy to see progress on this project. I think this is something that was identified in our master plan and something that, um, adds non-homestead uh, construction and, and value and, uh, property to, um, what's an underutilized site currently. And, um, I know that there, you know, obviously are concerned neighbors, um, especially those who live closest to the development. And I know that previously, uh, the, uh, the developer and, and the owner had been in touch uh, with the Arbers and the Arbers HOA, and I would urge them to continue that open line of communication um, as that is, that is, you know, your closest, the closest neighbor, uh, to the development. Aside from us here at Village Hall, uh, perhaps. We, yes, Rosemary, would you like to say something?
Well, yeah, I just, it's funny. Um, Rosemary Schlang, Nine Baybury Lane in the Arbers. Um, I was not prepared to speak this evening. I thought the points in Ms. Snyder's letter were very well taken. Um, but I just wanted to ask about the two points that I would speak in favor of if I had an opportunity to speak. And the first one is the, um, the construction management plan. She had a suggestion that, that's very important to those of us in the Arbers. And she had a suggestion that that might be, um, put into the conditions for approval of the, uh, I'm paraphrasing. Um, she said exactly, she would respectfully request that all the conditions be reiterated in the board's final amended finding statement. Is, would that be possible? Um, perhaps they still need to go through the planning board? I mean, how, how, how is that handled?
Well, I think there was a construction manager, if I remember correctly, it was part of the EIS.
Part of the approval as well.
And part of the approval, okay.
And Mr. DeMarco can, can address that as well.
Right, so all, all demolition and construction management conditions from the original approval resolution are proposed to remain in the amended, uh, PUD site plan approval resolution. Nothing has changed in the findings regarding these items.
So, it wouldn't change the findings statement. It would, um, the, the, where it's captured is in the, um, site plan approval process, not in the amended finding statement?
So that's the planning board?
That's the planning board, to the extent that it's before them, that's something they have to look at because they remember they're only reviewing the amended portions of it. What, what Mr. DeMarco was saying, there's no changes that would impact that, that particular item. So, we, we can't, the board can't speak for it because that's not before them. But, um, they, they will only review or put additional conditions on that are a result of the, uh, amended site plan application.
Well, the, the planning board did request, um, an updated copy of the construction management plan.
Mm-hmm.
So I imagine that's on the agenda for, um, for Thursday. The other, um, point that I would like to speak in favor of, if I could, is the need for, um, a safer street, uh, plan, a study and a plan. Um, that's, she had it kind of combined with the traffic impact study. And, and I think the two are intrinsically, um, related. Um, and, and I would speak in favor of that, um, not because of anything that has changed in, in the site plan submission, but in terms of what has changed in the world, in terms of new information that has come to light about assisted living facilities and especially memory care facilities. And that, that now famous study that the Washington Post did, that resulted in a senate investigation, where they found that people who had dementia, older adults with dementia, um, sometimes maybe they felt trapped where they were, even though it was for their own good, and, and they tried to get out. And many of them were successful, and they wandered away. And very sadly, some of them were killed. They were hit by cars. Um, they, they were, uh, the facility did the very best they could, but, you know, people are human and, and mistakes happen. And safety has become a very big issue, um, for assisted living facilities and for, um, memory care facilities, which is exactly what is proposed for nine hundred King Street. So, I, I guess I, I'm very concerned about the safety aspects and, and i- is that not a seeker concern?
That, in my opinion, that is the type of concern that would have come up with the original project. It's not something that's new as part of this amended application. So, uh, the focus of the, of the board in terms of looking at the amended finding statement should be focused on what are the new issues that are brought up as a result of the amended application.
I was just gonna say, I thought that what we had said previously is that we can't get a second bite of the apple. That what we have decided is sort of locked in unless there's been a change by the applicant. And if there's no change by the applicant that affects this, we can't just review it again because as you say, Rosemary, the world has changed. The world is constantly changing. We'd be constantly reviewing it.
But the seeker law says that you can require a supplemental EIS, uh, as a result of, um, any significant impacts that may result from newly discovered information or a change in circumstances. And this is newly discovered information. People were not aware of it until the research was done and, and, and it was published in late two thousand twenty-three. So we're, we're not, we, we had no way of knowing this back in, when was it, two thousand twenty-one? When, when the original site plan was approved. So I mean, I just, I, I think it needs to be taken into account somehow. And I think that Leslie, uh, Ms. Snyder's suggestion that it be, um, kind of built into a condition, um...
Personally, I don't see us building it into any conditions certainly of the finding statement. Um, you know, I think we're lucky in Rybrook and that we have a few independent living facilities and, and assisted living facilities in Rybrook, um, you know, and I think, you know, things change there as well. Um, you know, and we're certainly not asking them to...
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but finding statements don't have conditions in them.
Uh, correct, yeah. It wouldn't be a condition, um, that you would put in a finding statement. This is just, uh, reaffirming that there are no more... This is just reaffirming that there are no more significant environmental issues.
Right.
Based on the changes to the plan.
Right. And, and certainly, you know, up here on the board, we rely heavily on our, on, you know, the experts and, and our consultants. And so, you know, when we're looking at it, and what we have before us is simply that seeker finding statement that the amendments don't change environmentally this significantly. And so that, that's what our purview is currently before us. And perhaps, you know, these can be brought up in the planning board meeting.
Yeah, I think that's probably makes sense in a planning board meeting. You know, the other thing is laws are changing. And if this is something that's that serious, I think the, the laws will change to make these places safer. In fact, that is what you're saying, that there, people are roaming around with dementia and, you know. So I think, you know, down the road, rules may change, laws may change, and it'll affect all the facilities, so.
Well, we're certainly hoping that the laws will change. But, you know, the Arbers is, we have private roads and, and we have to hire our own contractor to do maintenance there. And I don't know about you, but I would not be able to live with myself if someone from that memory care facility wandered down Arbor Drive on those narrow roads with no sidewalks, got hit by a car and died. I don't think I could live with that. If you feel comfortable with that, then that's your, your, your decision.
Well, we appreciate you coming out tonight and, and the letter you wrote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a lot of, I'll address it. There's a, there's a lot of technology with keeping the assisted, the independent, not the assisted living people, the ones that have dementia in, thank you, in, in a space. Just because I've been to many, my father was not in one of those, but where in order to even go on an elevator, that somebody had to punch in a code. So it's in a separate unit, it's encased, and I feel comfortable with how they design the unit. It is Sunrise and it's a really good company. So I just want to put my two cents in there.
Yeah, please, Dan.
I'm Dan Barnett, president of the Arbers HOA. I live at Fort Bayberry Close in the Arbers. Thank you for reading the letter. And, you know, as I said, as soon as we can have another meeting, we would like to as soon as possible, please. Because there's some things that, for the future, not necessarily pertaining to this project, that we should discuss. The one thing that was brought up here, and I can understand if legally there's no, but I, I just want to make sure it's said because I said it at the planning board meeting. The Arbers is responsible for cleaning out 41 Hillandales, the sewer outlet, twice a year. That overflows and comes out of their backyard all the time. So Matt Retner, who owns the property now, that happened to him twice. He had enough and he started paying for additional cleanouts so that it would no longer occur. And according to him, it hasn't. He sold it, he's moved to Jacksonville, so there'll be a new owner. What our concern is, is that the entire time that we've been doing that, there hasn't been an occupant to 900 King Street. And so to have an occupant there, right? And the reason why this came up, to your point, was, if my memory serves me, and I, that's the worst headache in the world, so it's a little off right now. There was a letter that, that, that came up at the last meetings about looking at the, the maximum amount that can be held. And at that time, you may be aware, now you may have gotten update, that wasn't sure if the, if it would hold the assumption, because it was a 10-inch that it would. But I had brought up at that time that this situation was occurring. The difference between what used to be a 900 and what will be a 900 is the time to which they use facilities. So they'd be showering on the same times we'd be showering, you know, at home the same time we'd be home. Whereas the previous occupant was an office building, and so when we were home, they weren't. And when they were there, we weren't. And so we weren't, they weren't really adding to the sewer. So what I'm nervous about, and it may not be something that's here, but I just want to state publicly, that if there is an issue in the future, our responsibility is to clean it out twice a year. And if, I don't know what then happens, if this is going to be a problem that maybe just affects them and that, that's ours for them, but it's a $3.7 million purchase that was just made for that property. And I just want to make sure that we are in a burden to our neighbors in Hillendale because we all know what happened the last time that occurred. I couldn't buy my house in the Arbers because of the litigation that was going on when a resident in Hillendale was anchored, who owned that property in the past, who served on the village board. And if you know who I'm talking about, great, but if you don't, you can ask. So I, I just want to state publicly that, you know, it, it's fine if that's what has to be. But I, I believe this is going to turn into an issue in the future. And I just want us to think about how this can be resolved so that we don't impose issues to neighbors going forward. It really doesn't impact anything we have to do. We're just bringing it up so that you were aware because it started to become a conversation at the planning board meeting when sewers started to come up in conversation. So that's why it was added and discussed. And if it doesn't have relevance now, but I just want you to know about the situation.
It's not, yeah, it's definitely, it's not part of the finding, the finding statement, but it is something that the village is responsible for under the Sewer Act to make sure that sewers are properly maintained. So, so on new construction or modified construction, that's why we try to make sure, like, the system gets relined and everything there. But ongoing maintenance is something we encourage, you know, both the developer and the Arbers HOA to have a dialogue about, you know, any maintenance of the sewer lines that are anywhere within the peor day.
The problem is, is that it leaves theirs property, enters our property, and then comes out the other side. So what they're doing in terms of relining really has no say on our side of the property. And so if there's future issues, what's going on here? Can't possibly refer away from this microphone. But I don't know if it would be. And so I, I, it's not like a big deal theoretically, but it's something that I just wanted to...
It's an issue, yeah. It's just not the subject of this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, but I wanted you to hear it because I know the planning board.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Epstein.
Since they're instituting a whole new sewer design, I would imagine, can't they, yes, no? It's a new project.
Not really, no.
No?
Uh, no, they're going to reline and some, the existing, the existing piping.
They don't have to increase it or based on the amounts of people?
Is that correct? So the sanitary sewer...
There's no showers in 900 King?
So it's, right now, it's a 10-inch main, it's a, it's a 10-inch main that comes from the site that's being relined. Does that sound right?
And again, this was all...
There's basically 10-inch and 8-inch between Hillandale and, and the site.
You can't foresee everything. I understand their point.
Mm-hmm. Has to be maintained, too. I mean, you get root intrusions, you have to reline, you got to do maintenance. Any sewer system definitely requires maintenance.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Yes?
No, I, I'm glad we're addressing and that we have other boards addressing. A lot of the really good issues that were brought up by the letters that we got today. I was, in terms of a change, one of the changes pointed out in, in Leslie's letter was that there's essentially 5% more parking places. And as, Sarah, as I understand it, your study was not based on parking places, right? It was based on number of units.
Correct, it wasn't based on parking.
Quite a bit more units than they're actually proposing, number one. And number two, we had a dialogue, you know, that you said you also, your study added a 25% contingency on top of that?
Yeah, so the traffic study was prepared based on the original layout and proposal by the previous applicant. So right now, as it stands, there's 126 independent living units, 85 assisted living and 20 townhome units. At the time of the traffic study, there was 160 IL units. 85 same number of assisted living and 24 townhome units. But the traffic generation was based on the number of beds in the assisted living, the number of IL units, and the number of townhomes, which were all bigger or higher. We also put into the traffic generation number, we increased it by 25% to be more conservative, to account for bigger units, because at the time, they were talking about having larger-than-standard units for some of the, for some of them having three bedrooms. So kind of as a belt and suspenders, we had them increase the traffic generation by 25%. So as the project evolved, the number of units was greatly reduced to what was it?
So that makes, that makes me feel better on a lot of, I know it doesn't talk to the memory unit exactly, but it makes me feel better. And I just want to say that, you know, I do, I was on the planning board previously. I do think that all the boards are taking the Arbers issues very seriously, as we should. And that, you know, but also, we're also excited to have a new neighbor, hopefully Sunrise, to build a great facility and, you know, for the betterment of everybody in the village, you know.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, I know we, we covered a lot of, of topics here. Certainly, again, like I said earlier, this isn't the end of the process. This is still before our planning board and ARB. What we have in front of us, this resolution we have in front of us, is the seeker finding statement. And I think certainly we've gotten a lot of answers here tonight. And again, we still have the EIS document with a lot of conditions in there that will have to be adhered to, so. We already have a motion second. Any other comments from the board?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. We look forward to seeing more to come on this. All right, moving on, resolution number two, considering renewing an agreement with the Carver Center for pool services and the use of Garibaldi Park.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook Rec Department seeks to renew an agreement with, for the use of certain pool and related facilities at the Carver Center to support the Rybrook Day Camp. And whereas the Village of Rybrook has the use of Carver Center Pool and Related Facilities on several dates in July and August from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And whereas in exchange for the use of the Carver Center Pool and Related Facilities at no cost to the village, except for the cost of the three lifeguards and one water safety instructor at $100 an hour for the total cost of $3,200, the Carver Center has used Garibaldi Park for six weeks over the summer, from Monday through Friday, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM to hold the sports camp. Whereas both parties wish to renew the agreement, now therefore be resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate for the execution of said use agreement to permit use of the Carver Center Pool for the day camp and to allow the use of Garibaldi Park for six, for six weeks? I'll just verify that. For six weeks in the mornings for the use of the Carver Center Sports Camp.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, let's double check on that.
We'll get, we'll make it sure it's factually correct.
Two different things there, we'll make sure. But we, we really appreciate this agreement that we have and this partnership. It's certainly mutually beneficial. Having had kids who've gone through the camp, I think it's, you know, it's great that they're able to use the pool. They certainly enjoy it. Any questions or comments from the board? Did I get a motion?
I don't have a record of it, but unless Greg...
Yes, because I, I moved it and...
See how sick they get.
Thank you. Sorry.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Sometimes I go into autopilot. I just say it after a resolution, I forget that I've said it. All right, moving on, resolution number three, considering accepting funds for the Sustainability Committee.
Found money on the ground, right?
Literally, yes.
Literally. Whereas $100 was discovered during the fall annual community cleanup event coordinated by the Rybrook Sustainability Committee. And whereas the village is interested in accepting this discovered money. And whereas Rybrook wishes for the $100 to, funds to be allocated to the Sustainability Committee line within the Board of Trustees account in the Village of Rybrook fiscal year '25-26 general fund budget, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendment, and there's basically an amendment taking in the $100 and assigning it to the Sustainability Account and modifying the budget by increasing it, the expenditures and revenues by $100.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Second.
You know, I, I guess it makes sense, given that this was a cleanup day and therefore, you know, a Sustainability Committee event.
They got to look for that every time we go out, I guess.
I know, how do we find more?
I think the Sustainability Committee needs to buy a metal detector.
And then you'll never know what we can find.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or a money tree, that, you know, money tree, the falling.
That'd be nice also.
Couple of years to grow.
So, yeah, and I'm assuming this had to sit for a while and...
I think it's a year since, right? Since November, October.
I think I lost the 100.
You remember the serial number?
All right, well, well, certainly we appreciated everyone who came out for the community cleanup event and whoever found the money.
Did you find it?
Assemblyman Steve Otis bought it.
Still, really?
Right. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering renewal of a copier lease agreement with Connecticut Business Systems.
Whereas the County of Westchester and Connecticut Business Systems have entered into a shared service agreement that allows municipalities the same pricing. And whereas Rybrook currently has a lease agreement with CBS, which is Connecticut Business Systems, for a copier and scanning services. As whereas the village desires to continue using CBS for copier and scanning services for a monthly estimated cost of $233. Now therefore be resolved, the board enters into a five-year lease agreement with CBS Systems for copier and scanning services. Be it further resolved, the lease agreement will be in accordance with the shared service agreement and prices between the county and CBS. And be it further resolved, the agreement shall be in accordance with any modifications approved by legal counsel.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I find it interesting that we moved from found money to copying. Hopefully, these aren't related.
That's good, that's good.
Looks like we found about $25, right? Savings.
So, no, this is great. I'm assuming we've found this to, to be a good service and...
Yes, it's more than copy. We use them for scanning, we use them for a lot of services that we go through.
All right, great. Any questions or comments?
See if we can find more money.
More cleanups.
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering accepting a grant donation from the Rye Women's Club for the seniors at the AJP Center.
As trustee Marino said, more money.
More money.
Whereas Women's Club of Rye wants to provide a grant donation in the amount of $1,200 to the Anthony J. Pacilpa Center to provide financial assistance to seniors to participate in their hot meal and fitness programs. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is interested in accepting this grant donation, now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees, acting as the Board of Directors of the Friends of Rybrook, hereby accepts a grant donation in the amount of $1,200 for the seniors at the AJP Center to provide financial assistance to seniors to participate in their hot meal and fitness programs. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
All right. We certainly appreciate the Women's Club of Rye making this donation. And I think it's going to a great cause. I think those are two very popular programs at AJP. And, you know, certainly having the fitness classes and everything that Liz does down there is, is phenomenal. Any questions or comments from the board?
Kudos to Liz. Obviously, she's attracting. What's wrong?
Well, I never, nothing, no, it's good. No, I'm talking about the next thing on the agenda.
Oh, that it's not...
It's not, it's going to cost us money.
Right.
No, we get money back, though.
We get, we get.
Oh, we get here.
All right.
Oh, what a rule then.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, no, thank you very much. It's a substantial donation.
It is, it is.
And very generous of this organization. Is this just from the town? Is the Women's Club, does that include the city of Rye, too, or just the town of Rye?
I'm not sure.
Well, in any fact, it's greatly appreciated, I'm sure.
Very appreciated, yeah.
Very much so. And hopefully they'll be able to make it to some, I'm, I'm assuming they've been to some of the programs or some of their members have. And I would, and I would hope that if they haven't, they come in... And I would, and I would hope that if they haven't, they come and see what we do there so they can see the great programs that they're helping to fund.
And a reminder that people can join HAP Senior Club at age 55 or older.
They do a fantastic job.
For those of us who fit into that category.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize, I should have noticed this first. We're gonna take one of the resolutions out of order here. I'm gonna move to resolution number nine, considering the appointment of Joseph Loranga to the Traffic Commission.
Now therefore.
I apologize.
Now therefore be resolved that Joseph Loranga of 126 North Ridge Street is hereby appointed to the Traffic Commission for a term ending on the first Monday of April 2026.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Certainly we appreciate everyone who's willing to donate their time and volunteer their time for the Village of Rybrook. And I know, Joe, you've, you know, you've come to our meetings in the past, you know, and, and we really appreciate that you're, that you're willing to give of yourself to try and improve Rybrook and make Rybrook a better place to live. And that's, that's really what we're, what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No, real to have you.
Thank you.
No badge, sorry.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes, and thank you, Joe.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now back to.
More money.
All right, resolution number six, considering a supplemental agreement and adjustment to the snow and ice agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation for the 22 through 25 snow seasons.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has a five-year municipal snow and ice agreement with the State of New York DOT for the 2019-24 snow and, season for snow and ice control on King Street and Westchester Avenue. And whereas the snow and ice agreement allows for adjustment of estimated expenditure to each year of the contract term to account for changes in labor, materials, equipment. And in years two through five, the estimate may require a simple recalculation or a fully approved and executed contract amended, also known as a supplemental agreement, depending on how light or severe the previous winter was. And whereas a supplemental agreement and adjustment has been provided to the Village, increase in the expenditure for snow and ice control. Now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the approval of the New York State DOT supplemental agreement for a year, for three fiscal years, fiscal years ending 23, 24, and 25, for municipal snow and ice control with an adjusted expenditure payment to the Village of Rybrook. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we know, I, I, I know this is, you know, kind of looking back on some years and amended. Why, why the change?
You know, I've never, I can never figure it out. Sometimes they just look back at the costs. Sometimes we get additional funds for heavy winters that don't seem like heavy winters. I wish I had a better answer for you, Mayor, but some years we just seem to get better payments. But I don't know for these particular reasons.
All right. Well, I mean, we certainly appreciate.
The extra money.
And maybe, yeah, maybe they audited, you know, what the averages were across.
So looking at the documents a little bit, it looks like some of the labor costs were higher than they thought. So they did an adjustment of about two and a quarter percent up on labor in one of the contracts. I can look at the other ones real quick.
No, it's fine.
Looks like it was labor adjustments.
Okay. All right, well, we certainly appreciate it. And, and of course, we appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, it's labor.
Of our staff out there actually performing the work that we're getting partially reimbursed for, for, for these areas. Certainly, we know if you've driven around Rybrook in the winter, you know the streets are really well taken care of. And we also appreciate all the good bookkeeping to make sure we are appropriately, so.
Looks like the labor's up and also the salt prices were a little less than they originally expected.
So, all right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, same thing, renewal, considering a renewal agreement between the Village of Rybrook and New York State Department of Transportation for the 2024 through 2029 snow seasons.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook's existing snow and ice agreements expired on June 30th, 2024. And whereas Rybrook has received a proposed five-year renewal of an agreement with the New York State DOT for snow and ice control on King Street and Westchester Avenue for $34,820 annually for a total estimated payment of $171,901. And whereas Rybrook wishes to enter into a proposed snow and ice agreement with the New York State DOT, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a proposed renewal agreement between Rybrook and the DOT for snow and ice control on King Street and Westchester Avenue. And whereas the, and be it further resolved, that the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
And we'll just mention for the public that those two streets are mentioned because they're both state-owned streets that we maintain. So that's King Street and Westchester Avenue. We maintain them for snow and ice control under this agreement.
Right, where many of these streets are owned and maintained by the Village of Rybrook and therefore we take care of it ourselves without any reimbursement because it's our responsibility.
Yes.
Do we still have any county-owned streets?
Bowman Avenue and Ridge Street from Westchester Avenue south to the border.
Okay, so, and, and I'm.
And we get it, we do get funds from the county as well.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yeah, please, Trustee Crum.
The true-up talks about covering the 24-25 snow, snow year. But this agreement starts in 24 through 29?
I think it starts in the beginning of 24, the last agreement ended in June of 2024, I believe.
So.
That's a good point. Yeah, the previous resolution that we had.
It's retroactive, but the true-up is trueing us up before this one's even in place.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great.
Good point.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Good catch.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything.
Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering the award of bids for municipal vehicles and equipment.
Whereas on, in May of 2020-25, the Board of Trustees declared certain municipal vehicles and equipment as surplus. And whereas Rybrook has solicited bids for the surplus vehicles and equipment. And whereas a public notice was advertised in the official paper on May 18th, and listings were posted through Auctions International with an end date of Friday, May 30th, 2025. And whereas at 6:00 PM on Friday, May 30th, the bid deadline was completed. And whereas the following were the highest bidders for the surplus vehicles and equipment. So the highest bidders were for the 2013 Ford Explorer. The bidder was Bruce May in the amount of $1,875. For the 2014 Dodge Durango, it was Christ, Chris McCray in the amount of $5,600. And the Ricky Police Scanning System, Daniel Condon submitted a bid for $25. Now therefore be resolved that Bruce May has awarded the 2023 Ford Explorer and Chris McCray is awarded the 2014 Dodge Durango. Be it further resolved that should these bidders withdraw or be non-responsive, the Board of Trustees hereby awards the equipment to the next highest bidder. And be it further resolved that Daniel Condon shall not be awarded the Ricky Police Scanning System as it's not in the public's interest to sell it in that low of an amount. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
We're certainly glad to be able to sell the vehicles. Thank you, Michael or whoever else put all the work into that. We're glad. When these things actually go, I'm surprised to see the Ricky.
Yeah, so we're gonna try to ask around police departments and others that still may have some, need it for parts or other, other values. So we're trying to see if we can get more than $25 for it.
All right, yeah, and I know we had discussed this at a previous meeting, the, the system itself. I think, I think we have a higher bidder here, but it's, the bid is already closed, so unfortunately. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right.
Is there, I do have a question. Is there a way to find out who uses that system now, not just locally?
A lot of, the chief could comment on that, but he knows which departments locally use it, right?
Pretty much every department in Westchester has.
But they're becoming obsolete very quickly, right, this year?
We just upgraded our system, correct? Yeah.
Also then we should go wider net.
So maybe broader.
Well, Auctions International captures, captures a very wide group. That's what, that's why we do it through them.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, that's why we, we've been really increasing the bid amounts we receive for our vehicles, like 2,600, 5,600 for the 2014 Dodge Durango. And years ago, we were getting, you know.
A thousand.
Yeah, a thousand dollars, exactly.
Yeah, parts alone.
But the police, the Ricky system, for some reason, just, you know, whether the police aren't looking at that kind of stuff online or, you know, it's a little bit different type of market. So obviously for $25, we're gonna try to see if we can get a little bit more. But we definitely want it out of our building so we, it doesn't take up space.
All right.
Thank you, Chris.
But there's, what you said, there's monitors and, there's computer systems and monitors. So it's gotta have a value of more than $25, a camera, you know?
Yeah, reuse repurposed.
Yeah.
Chief, I'm up to 26.
What are you gonna do with that?
I'm thinking maybe Susan Eyle each put in 13 and we'll figure something.
Make an art project.
If you can pick it up tonight, if you can pick it up tonight, maybe.
How big is it?
About the size of a boat.
Costs you more to move it.
Yeah.
I'll even go 26 and a half.
Great.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 10, considering a stipend for an office assistant office manager.
Whereas the senior office assistant office manager Jessica Carpenteriari has agreed to assist the Treasury Department due to an anticipated temporary staff shortage. And whereas the Board, the Village of Rybrook wishes to compensate this employee while performing these additional responsibilities, now therefore be resolved, that the senior office assistant office manager Jessica Carpenteriari shall provide a, be provided a stipend of $250 per paycheck for additional responsibilities, assisting the Treasury Department during the period of the anticipated staffing shortage. And be it further resolved, the stipend shall end no later than August 15th, 2025, unless additional authorization is provided by the Village Board.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved. Second.
Have we said in the past that we have amazing employees here in the Village of Rybrook? I don't think we can say it enough, that, you know, the ability of people to step up into positions, we, we really appreciate Jessica stepping up into this.
Yes, we do, yes.
I think it's both the ability and the willingness.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, we really appreciate the help and it's, it is, as the mayor said, it's really nice to see, you know, the departments looking to help each other out. And not to go unnoticed, Michael Nowak, who's giving us, allowing Jessica to take on some additional work, which means he takes on additional work during that time, too.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
My understanding is there's other work being shifted too that is appreciated, right?
Yeah, we're shifting it all around, yeah, within treasury office as well. So everybody's trying to work together to make sure it gets done.
Excellent, yeah.
Great teamwork.
Absolutely.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. We have one add-on resolution, resolution number 11, considering appointments to the Airport Advisory Council.
Okay, now therefore be resolved that Gil Amato of 23 Airlam Lane is hereby appointed to the Airport Advisory Council for a term ending in April of 2026. And be it further resolved, that Fabio Marconi of 11 Carlton Lane is appointed to the Airport Advisory Council for a term ending the first Monday of April 26. Be it further resolved, that Gerald Donnelly of 2 Mulberry Court is hereby appointed to the Airport Advisory Council, also for, for a term ending the first Monday of April 2028. And be it further resolved, that John Kea of 12 Primrose Lane is also appointed to the Airport Advisory Council for a term ending the first Monday of April 2028.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Again, we, we thank everyone who's willing to volunteer their time to help make the Village a better place. Certainly, you know, I've said it many, many times, that I personally feel that no community is impacted more than Rybrook in regards to Westchester County Airport. That, you know, we have flights constantly coming over. We have houses within a quarter mile of the runway. And the blind brook flows from the airport down into Rybrook. So everything that happens there affects the residents of Rybrook. So having a strong Airport Advisory Council, I think, is incumbent upon us. We certainly thank Peter Schlaktis for all that he's done for that committee and the representation that we have on the county's Airport Advisory Committee. And so we thank all of these, all for these individuals who are, who are willing to, again, give of their time to help the Village become a better place. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, very good.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Crum?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Well, we hear the rain on the roof tonight, so we're hoping, we're hoping very much that the weather will change for the Saturday for Rybrook's birth, annual birthday celebration. That's June 14th from 12 to 4:00 PM on the King Street Turf Field. So we have a really great day planned, so we're hoping the weather, the weather will cooperate. And there's a lot of free rides and events, as we always do, food for a very nominal fee. And there's a lot of, wow, that was some rain. The, you know, we have a lot of fun events there, a lot of, we'll be, giveaways as well. So it's good, we're scheduled for a great day. We just hope the weather holds out. And it's always the day before Father's Day every year in Rybrook. The location, it's the second year we're gonna be at the turf field. We have a nice layout for everything. If it's a hot day, we'll have ways to keep cool. And they've been planning on that for many, for a long time, so I hope it all works out and we have another great day. Pickleball, pickleball courts at Garibaldi, they're starting that work tomorrow. They're scheduled for to start putting the posts in.
Awesome.
So the posts will be going in and then they'll have to just repaint the lines, repaint the court, resurface the court. So, you know, just looking at a few weeks and then we're hoping, we're gonna have an opening event and demo on July 12th. So, you know, be used before, you can use it before that date. But we are looking to have an event there on, on the morning, on that Saturday morning from 10 to 12, where we're gonna have an opening for the new pickleball courts and also demonstrations. We'll get information out to the public as it gets a little closer. So people can learn how to play if you don't know how to play and know about the availability of new courts in the community.
A Saturday morning?
Yes. Yeah, because we figured that's, we figured that would be a good time for, before the day starts, kind of. But we can always do it, you know, we can do several. Building, Building Department has, is, after a long time working internally, they are now opening, they opened up to the public the Cloud Pyramid Online Building System. And it's a soft launch they're doing through August 1st. By calling it a soft launch, we're going to be, right now, people can do it in multiple ways. We still have it online. We have PDS online of the applications that we had in the past. But we really want to encourage for a few months that people start using the system. It's actually set up also in the hallway, as well as access online from home or in your people's offices, where you can submit applications all electronically and online. And our staff is there to help out. And then after August 1st, you know, we're gonna take the PDS off and do, encourage everyone to do it through the online system. Two EMS bills are going on in New York State that are of note, that just picked up this week. So these are two things. I was, you know, I was on, on the phone with Assemblyman Otis last night and going back and forth with Senator Mayor today, as well as NICOM. And, uh, there are two EMS bills that are taking place. It's not what everyone hoped for in terms of declaring them essential as an essential service, which is what our priority was. But there are some, you know, these are significant notes. One bill, which seems to be picking up steam and NICOM's calling it a high priority item, um, that is getting some traction is to take your cost for EMS and eliminate it as part of the tax cap. So what that's doing is some communities that are reluctant to, um, put additional money because, uh, that's going to impact their tax cap concerns, it would be eliminated as part of a tax cap concern. So that's something, that's an interesting way to, to try to encourage municipalities in different parts of the state to really put more money into that system and not affect them, you know, in, in various ways when they're doing their budget. The other bill is one that Steve, um, Assemblyman Otis and Senator Meyer are, are working on, which is, uh, one of the problems they're running into is trying to get funding for a lot of the, the funds that, the, the programs that are there and identifying where the gaps in services are and, uh, needs. So they're trying to have the counties and the municipalities work, be required to provide a, um, a plan that would identify and identify costs and gas, gaps in service, or they call like EMS deserts and things like that throughout the state, uh, which is where, you know, it's harder to get coverage to. And there's no coverage to or very far distances to travel. And even in Westchester, trying to work on things like how do we improve mutual aid? And do things like telehealth and do things like that that would help. So coming up with a planning document that would have costs attached to it. And then this next stage would be to try to work on some funding sources for those purposes to make sure that adequate coverage is provided. So again, not exactly the direction we were hoping for, but they're still promising and would make a positive impact. Um, I know the one that wouldn't impact the tax cap is one that concerns a lot of municipalities. Um, if they, if that, you know, what the impact would be if they were required to provide funding and that would push them over the cap. So that would give some relief to those communities.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and, and again, you know, as you said, the Rybrook birthday party coming up, uh, this Saturday. And, um, for those interested, you know, I've been looking at the, um, we take part and we do have a weather station on top of Village Hall. Um, and it's accessible to anyone through the Davis Weather Link. Um, in the time of this meeting, we've received a half an inch of rain. So we keep hearing it on the roof. Uh, we know it's there. Hopefully Mother Nature got all of the rain out now, so it'll be nice on Saturday. Um, we do have one item of new business on the agenda for, for discussion. Uh, that being the, uh, Webb Avenue Residential Development, Bowman Avenue sidewalk. So, uh, Chris, do you want to give a little background? Should I? What do you?
Sure, yeah. So, uh, the web development project in Harrison, uh, was approved by the town village of Harrison. Uh, it's a large housing development and as part of that development, the Harrison required that they put a sidewalk in place from that development basically to the shopping center on the north side of Bowman Avenue. Um, so that's a requirement that they pursue that, uh, which would obviously involve the village of Rybrook. So Harrison and the, sorry, the developer contacted the village, which we alerted the board about and also alerted the school district about. And, uh, because the school, anywhere where there's a sidewalk, remember, there's a requirement that the, um, adjoining property owner has to maintain those sidewalks. Maintain it meaning snow and ice, maintaining it meaning, you know, anything that has to be replaced. I mean, cracks or potholes, anything that happens on those sidewalks have to be repaired and maintained or ultimately replaced if it's, you know, completely failing over time. So the school district, the school district did discuss the subject. Um, and they do have no interest in having a sidewalk placed there. So they've already expressed that they do not want a sidewalk, uh, on the property. And they are looking for feedback from the village board if the village board feels the same way. And then presumably they would go to Harrison and say, you know, they're not interested in a sidewalk in that particular location. So that's why it's on a discussion item. Um, they're looking, they've requested feedback in a letter that was sent to the village from the developer.
Thank you, Chris. Um, you know, certainly I know where I stand on this. I'd open it up to comment from, from the board. Um, as Chris said, you know, this was a, uh, an item placed as a requirement from a, from one municipality to another. Um, and it's, you know, the, and, and again, this is, and also as Chris said, this is, um, something that, you know, local law, and this isn't unique to Rybrook, would require that the sidewalk be maintained, uh, by the, by the adjacent owner of the property, which is the Portchester School District for a large section of this.
Ralph? Would the school system have any greater potential liability by not building a sidewalk if somebody were to get hurt walking?
I don't think so. Uh, I think, I think that the, the issue is, is, um, going to be with respect to how the school district maintains the, the property that, that it owns, right? So, um, that is on, that adjoins their property or is that, that owned by them?
The, the sidewalk, the potential, the proposed sidewalk locations on the north side of Bowman Avenue. They do have a sidewalk that basically gets them from Rid Street down to their parking area. Uh, so basically you have an area that covers the area that where the kids would be walking. Uh, in this location, it's unlikely or less likely that the kids would be walking towards Bowman Avenue.
Okay.
So really the, the purpose there, that they have the sidewalks and I, I'm assuming is really to get the kids to more of the shopping center areas or the Rid Street school areas. Um, certainly the sidewalk is intended, if it was to be put in place, it was intended, it would be intended to get the people who live at Webb Avenue to the shopping center.
Understood, understood. Um, I think that's more of a question, David. I don't, I don't want to punt on it, but I think the question should be directed towards the insurance carrier for the, the school district uh, to have them weigh in on, uh, whether they see it as a liability concern with respect to having a sidewalk there.
So I will give you, I'll read you the operative part of the letter, which is what they're asking. Um, we respectfully request that both the village and the school district respond to this letter either confirming that, A, they would like the applicant to proceed with constructing the sidewalk as proposed on north side of Bowman Avenue and that the village or school district will maintain the same as it does with all its sidewalks. Or B, that they are not in favor of the sidewalk, in which event the applicant will provide said position to the town planning board in Harrison and request approval for the sidewalk to be removed as a condition of the project. Uh, presumably we probably, whether we have to respond at all is a question as well. Probably don't have to respond. Or you could respond, another response might be that
C.
That, you know, if they build the sidewalk, they should maintain it. It's for the purpose of the development.
Right. I agree. That's, well, that'd be the answer back. This is, well, there's a C, that's it.
Off, off the, you know, off the page.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so I think what, what Trustee Marino is proposing is that we, is that we essentially write a letter saying that, you know, we, we
We think it'd be wonderful.
Don't necessarily have an opinion whether or not the sidewalk is built. But if the sidewalk is built, that the developer should be responsible for the maintenance of it.
Or the property owner.
The property owner.
Yeah.
Right, the property owner. Does that?
Yeah.
Sense?
Their, their letters, I thought I saw a letter in the file where they're staying the position that the precedent in the village law is pretty clear that property owners abutting sidewalks have to maintain sidewalks. So this would be
An agreement.
This would be
Not absolute.
No, it's not absolute, okay.
There's many municipalities that maintain sidewalks.
Do we have precedent in our village?
No, the maintain, uh, the only thing we have precedent for is where we've received grants, we've installed sidewalks or replaced sidewalks.
But not forced anybody else to maintain?
The homeowner's responsible for maintaining it.
Right.
Where, and, and replacing them.
Right.
The only place where we've done anything is where we get grants, we've installed sidewalks or replaced sidewalks on main road, main roadways. But then it's still the responsibility of the adjoining homeowner to maintain them.
I mean, I'm in favor of sidewalks just generally. I think it adds to the village, uh, safety, beauty, uh, living conditions, walkability, which is sustainability. Um, you know, maybe they could put in a bike path instead of a sidewalk or something, but I think something along these lines is good, yeah.
No question about it, but I think the fact is that the school can't afford to maintain it. And it's something that, uh, this is, most likely this is the benefit that, uh, that's facility, not so much the school.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and, and I think we, we have no interest in taking over a sidewalk.
Right, no, I get that.
You know, especially for a development that, um, does not benefit Rybrook residents. It potentially would, would benefit Rybrook businesses.
It would, yeah.
By allowing, uh, you know, a walking path to the Rybridge Shopping Center located in Rybrook. But, um, certainly, you know, not, not anything that, that I would entertain us taking over responsibilities, so.
And if the mayor?
Yeah.
If the board were to write a letter that was proposed, which was saying that, you know, take no position on the sidewalk to serve the development, but the property owner, uh, of Webb Avenue should maintain it and be responsible for it. If you're going to do that, just, we should have language in there, as, as council said, just indicating, just to be clear that that would be an agreement between the developer and the school district. That would have to be agreed.
Right.
Because it's still ultimately
Or
the school's responsibility, which they essentially would be turning over to the developer.
Right, or if, I mean, or if they end up moving it to the other side of the road, then it would be the property owner on the other side of the road.
Which is City of Ry.
Whoever that property owner would be, right.
Yeah, and City of Ry and also, um, hmm?
Harrison.
Harrison and also, uh, who kept, kept the development.
Yeah, the, the point or whatever.
The point.
Keyhole there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, I mean, personally I'd be comfortable, I mean, again, there is a, another option that we just don't send a letter. Um, I think they've probably heard from the school district, that the school district has no interest in, uh, in maintaining a sidewalk. Certainly the village, I think whatever we write, the village has no interest in maintaining a sidewalk. Um, that, you know, we see the benefits of a sidewalk, but we don't have an opinion on whether this one should or should not be built. However, if it is built, we, uh, I don't know what the word is, strongly, uh
Responsible to maintain or the school.
That, that
That's an agreement.
They enter into agreement with either the school district or the other property owners for it to be maintained by some entity.
Remember, this isn't an action item. This is really for new business, so, yeah, we can get the sense, if that's the sense of the board, we could draft a letter and circulate it.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it certainly sounds as if the direct benefit from any sidewalk would be for the Harrison people.
Yes.
Rybrook only gets an indirect benefit potentially if they then go to the shopping center.
Right.
Correct.
But that is an indirect benefit.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. The question is, do we feel, do we
Do you want to respond at all?
That it's appropriate for us to respond, right?
Makes it easier for us to pick up trash along the road, right?
We close it down. We, no, we have the great help of our, of our Rybrook Police Department.
I think, I think you kind of have to respond in some way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we should respond.
Whatever way you, you want to respond, but I think
Do you want me to draft a letter based on the tone that was expressed tonight by the mayor? And talk to, and the board? I heard a few different comments. That's why I'm just trying to
Well, could you draft it and then circulate it?
That's what I do, and circulating to the board.
That's what Chris would do.
No question.
It's not an action item tonight, like Chris said, so.
I don't know if we're, if we're responsible to, or, because really it's a school property. You're the ones, they're going to have to maintain it, not us, right?
If it's on that side of the road, yeah.
Okay, okay. And disagreement really should be between the school and the developer.
Yeah.
And we're
We're permitting and, and doing the plans.
The truth is, we had a discussion tonight early, if I can interject, I apologize, on the fact that there's going to be, um, a plan for the traffic for the school. And quite frankly, this would be one of those issues. So I think that by, uh, leaving this door open, I think it should be left open. And if they recommend it, I think it benefits the students most of all. It benefits the residents that live nearby. Uh, it does benefit our, um, uh, Rybridge Plaza because, uh, people will go there, uh, and use a safer mode to get there. So I think it's a benefit. Quite frankly, who pays for it? That is not for me to decide.
Right, well, it's not about paying for it. And I, I would disagree with one aspect of that. I don't think it benefits the school stu, the students at all.
Why?
Because they already have a sidewalk going from the school up that way.
They go to the, they all go to the shopping center after school.
But they, they already have a sidewalk going from the school up that way.
Oh, so it's, so it's below.
This is going the other way and into Harrison, so it wouldn't, the residents of that, of that development wouldn't be going to the school, the
Right.
Wouldn't be going to the, the
Thank you for clarifying.
The Portchester School, so there's already one going the other way, so, um
It's from the Webb Avenue Development to the ball field.
Yeah.
I said it would benefit the people who use the door.
Well, the ball field is popular. Isn't that where the band, um, practices?
Yeah, but they're not walking necessarily in the street other than getting to the ball field.
Well, I guess you have to do some sort of
So it's, it's pretty much the whole baseball field length. Is that what you're saying?
No, all the way up to Webb Avenue.
No, all the way up to Webb.
That's all school property?
No, no, then it goes to
Dangerous, thoroughfare.
After it leaves the
Nobody walks on that area.
After it leaves the school property, it goes to eight hundred Westchester property. But since they, that was on the site, the development on Webb Avenue was part of the, it used to be part of the eight hundred Westchester property. We're presuming that they'd be in favor of it.
No.
And would maintain it.
They're going to have a lot of residents there and those residents are going to be walking to Rybridge Plaza.
Yes, the, if you, if you were talking about the benefit, that's what Trustee Heizer said. The benefit to Rybrook would be an indirect benefit of people maybe going to the shopping center that would be walking.
I think, I think it's a total, what they're going to be doing, yeah.
Wait, right, but, but the question, the question before us right now
Yeah.
is not whether we are in favor or not of a sidewalk.
Oh.
That's, I mean, it's, it's, it's about maintenance. So, you know, they're, Harrison in this web development, um, you know, imposed the condition on the developer that they build a sidewalk in this area, including in the village of Rybrook along the Portchester's, uh, middle school property. And so, you know, what, you know, what we're basically being asked is, you know, whether we're gonna, you know, it says, uh, we are not in favor of the sidewalk in the event the applicant, the deposition, oh wait, where is it? I'm, I lost it again, but it, um, you know, I guess it does have to do with the building of the sidewalk. Um, but again, this has to do with maintenance. And if they can't enter into an agreement with anyone to maintain the sidewalk and they're not willing to maintain the sidewalk themselves.
But they, they have to maintain it.
Then there's no
They're being, they were asked to do it as a matter of building.
They do not have to maintain it. If they build it, it's the property owner's responsibility per our code to maintain the sidewalk.
But I thought that Chris said that in some circumstances, it's not always that way.
No, what I said was, it's not, the precedent isn't, there's not a law that says the adjoining property owner has to maintain. It's a village law that says that. Our village law says that. Our village of Rybrook code says that, not village, not village, not New York State village law. So the, under our code, and in a lot of codes, the adjoining homeowner has to maintain, replace clean snow, ice off the sidewalk.
Right.
Um, that's our, that's our village code, which is typical in a lot of places. Um, so if you wanted, if, so if there, the sidewalk that would be put there would have to be maintained by the school district. And the only way for the, the school is saying, we don't want to maintain it. So then the only other way to do it would be to either not build it or to have it be maintained by somebody else. And the applicant in Harrison is saying, well, it should be the village of the school. And we obviously don't think that that would be appropriate since it's really serving the development of Webb Avenue. If anybody, it should be the property owner that would benefit from it, which would be the one in Harrison.
Right.
So we're being, we're being nice to the school system, really, by not approving this.
No, well, I mean, they would need to, no, I mean, really
Or they'd still have to approve it too.
They would have, the school would have to approve the sidewalk.
Oh, they'd have to approve it as well? Or no?
If they're, they're responsible for the maintenance of it.
It's a right of way, if it's public right of way, you could argue that, um, the village could require, could allow it to happen.
Yeah.
But the school wouldn't be too happy about it.
No, they wouldn't be. And again, my personal opinion is that, is, is twofold.
Yeah.
You know, one
And lighting.
I wouldn't want to see the, I wouldn't want to see
There's no lighting on that road?
I wouldn't want to see a sidewalk built without the responsible party being in favor of this. A, and B, honestly, I just don't like the idea of one municipality commanding what has to happen in another municipality.
Well, really what we're saying is that the village of Rybrook and the Portchester school system has no interest in maintaining any sidewalk that's built there.
Correct.
If you, Mr. Harrison, want to build a sidewalk, as long as you understand it's going to be your responsibility to maintain it, God bless you.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't have to go
Not, not, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the Rybrook code.
Does it, does it have to go before our planning board?
No.
No?
No, it's a, it's a sidewalk on a county, county roadway, public right of way. No, it's a, it's a sidewalk on a county, county roadway, public right of way.
Uh, the impervious, extra impervious doesn't have, is more than four hundred square feet?
County approval.
For this, it's, uh, it's municipal property. It's also municipal property because of the public right of way.
Okay. Okay.
And we could draft an agreement if, if all
Sure, you'd have to, because you'd have to enforce it and we wouldn't be able to necessarily give them a ticket for not enforcing it unless there was some
Agreement.
Agreement that we would
Right, because it wouldn't be, because it would be a resident not in the village of Rybrook, which is again why, you know, you know, municipalities shouldn't, uh, try and command other municipalities to do something. Or put conditions in a development that would affect another municipality without any form of communication with the municipality in which they are commanding that this be built.
Shame on them. All right.
We'll draft a letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you have the boards, I think you have the sentiment of the board.
There you go, now that we've clarified that, thank you.
All right, that concludes the, the, uh, agenda business of, of our board. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, the next meetings of the Board of Trustees will be June twenty-fourth and July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What? If you
I'll drive you.